I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Canvas sing.
All right, I've got the canvas here for the city of Correctionville special election. There was the, to fill a vacancy for the mayor and one councilman position on the ballot along with the question on whether they should pass a bond for repairing their swimming pool. So I've got the certificates and the abstract of votes here for you. The bond issue did pass. We had two absentee voters that voted at the counter and only one provisional ballot, which did not get counted because the person did not provide their proof of residency to us in time, so.
Very good. We need to sign all that?
Yes.
You need a motion receiver? Is there anything?
Yes.
Motion received.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Okay. Any citizen concerns? As we sign. Good to see you back, Mark. Okay. Need approval of this agenda?
I move approval of the agenda dated March 10th, 2015.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Approval of the minutes of March 3rd, 2015.
I would move...
I've given you some updated set of minutes to be submitted to you. There's some copies out there if anybody else wants them, but there are a couple typos. Seventy-four, twenty-six on the apportionment of the utilities. There was another one that said three-oh in the original one. It should have been three to two. And then item 11, I added to that to reflect what occurred at the meeting as far as the... There was a motion that said passed two to nothing because three supervisors abstained from voting. The chair declared that it had passed, but the assistant county attorney had advised you that he thought that it had not passed. And so that's what is reflected in the minutes. The minutes reflect what actually occurred at the meeting. You'll be able to correct them at a later date. Joshua.
And the item will be brought back next week.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chair? So do we need to state in the minutes that the motion failed for a lack of a quorum, even though it was declared or not?
It was declared passed, my understanding. You folks can tell me if whatever occurred. My understanding was it was declared that it had passed two to nothing. And that might have been for several years ago, I'd advise the board that they could pass minutes on a two to nothing vote, and I think I was wrong at that time. So, to approve the minutes. And that was an ministerial move at that time, but still, I think the assistant county attorney has advised that that's probably not a good practice. It's probably not a legal practice. Is that right? Joshua?
Yeah. That would be my question. Do we need to amend the minutes simply to say, I know it was declared passed or carried, but simply to say that the motion failed for a lack of a quorum, even though it was declared carried?
Yeah, I think there could be a reference to the statement at the meeting that it carried, but the correct legal conclusion is that it did not carry, and I think the minutes should reflect that.
So I would move approval of the minutes with the minutes reflecting that the motion failed to carry for a lack of a quorum.
Okay.
Okay.
At the advice of the assistant county attorney.
And I would take that friendly amendment from Mr. On.
Second.
Discussion.
And then this will come back next week?
This will come back next week along with another one for approval of the auditor for MURD, which also is administrative. Okay. Need, I've got a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Discussion of approval of claims.
Did we vote on the original motion, Pat?
Yes, just one motion to do it.
I would move approval of the claims.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay.
Human Resources, Ed. Need approval of the memorandum of personnel transactions?
Move to accept.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Authorized chairman to sign authorization to initiate hiring practice?
Move to authorize.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Okay. Approval of the HIDTA cross-designated employment agreement for attorney.
Don't know if you guys need any further discussion. It's basically what we had brought to the board before where we're going to work in collaborative effort to hire a new special assistant US attorney. It's actually a Woodbury County employee, but it's going to be fully reimbursed through the federal grant. So essentially, that's what the contract is for. It should state it's over a two-year period of time, which is the understanding between the parties. Again, fully paid by the grant, federal dollars, but technically, it's a Woodbury County employee.
Need a motion to approve?
Move it.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. There we go. Thank you. Last one. Approval of resolution thanking and commending Lonny Gustafson for service to Woodbury County. You're on.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'd like to ask Mr. Lonny Gustafson to please approach the podium and say a few words about him. I want to thank the board for what I think is a great step, and that's recognizing outstanding individuals in the community. I hope the things that we do unanimously and unified garner as much attention as the things that sometimes aren't. This is a good thing, and I've asked Mr. Lonny Gustafson to be here today. I want you to know a little bit about him. In addition to being a longtime employee at Diamond Vogel Paint Store, a Sunday School teacher, a dog sitter, custodian at First United Methodist Church, an active member of Big Brothers and Big Sisters, Lonny is a caller, and that may have meant more in yesteryear of country music and swing dancing, and it may be somewhat of a lost art, but with grace and style, Lonny calls. And I had a little bit of what this sounds like, and so I'm hoping that this will work. Otherwise, Lonny, you're going to be on at the microphone.
Number one state, balance and swing. Number one, you're swinging your perfect.
Now if you can hit it.
One stays down, two stays up. Balance now. Swing this.
And you may wonder why his calling is such a special calling. It's because the Circle and Swing Square Dance Group has garnered the attention of the Sioux City Journal, telethons, and now the Board of Supervisors, and it's because the swing dancers are mentally challenged folks between the ages of forty and sixty years old. They don country garb and boots and smiles, and they absolutely light up the floor with what they do. And Lonny very sacrificially dedicates his time and service to calling for these folks, and they meet in the church, and they have joy and purpose and a rhythm, the likes of which I don't possess. But I just wanted you to know of his service, and I think anyone with a humble heart and servant-like leader is wonderful. So I wanted to read the resolution and then have it presented by the board chair. This says, "Resolution thanking and commending Lonny Gustafson for your service to Woodbury County, whereas Lonny Gustafson has demonstrated himself to be an outstanding citizen of Woodbury County by leading the Circle and Swing Square Dance Group as a longtime caller for those who daily overcome intellectual disabilities, and whereas your service as a Woodbury County citizen has been characterized by your dedication to the best interests of our citizens of Woodbury County, now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Woodbury County, Iowa, that the undersigned members of the board thank and commend you for your years of service to Woodbury County. And be it further resolved that it's a wish of all those who signed below," and we all signed, "that the future hold only the best for this very deserving person, Lonny Gustafson." So I'll ask the board chair to present this.
Please come forward. Thank you, Lonny, for all you do.
Thank you very much.
You betcha. And you can just start right down there.
Congrats.
Thank you, Lonny. I'm going to jump to number nine, Sulan District Health, Kevin Green.
Good afternoon, lady and gentlemen. This is Kevin Green, Director of Sulan District Health Department, and as you know, the Board of Supervisors plays a crucial role to my Board of Health by appointing those members. We had one vacancy remaining after some of the elected not to renew their terms, and so as a result of that, we have worked with Karen and Heather in advertising the Sioux City Journal, reached out to recruit candidates. We did receive two applications, as I reviewed and took a look at those, and some of the things that the board had done for a self-assessment is they had indicated a strong interest in getting a representative from outside of maybe the Sioux City Sergeant Bluffery and more of a rural population. So kind of using that as their criteria and also with the business background, I'm happy to recommend Mr. Adam Lloyd, who is a Mulville resident, works in banking at Wells Fargo, and has elected and is excited about this potential of being a part of our Board of Health. So my recommendation is to please appoint Adam Lloyd to the Sulan District Board of Health.
I would move that.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. All right. Good enough. Thank you. Full board now.
Mr. Chairman, can we go back to seven D? I don't believe that there was...
Oh, I missed one?
No, when you presented that, it should have been a motion.
Need a motion?
Yes.
Need a motion to approve the resolution thanking Lonny?
I would move it, Mr. Chair.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. There we go.
Thank you.
All right. Approval of appointment to the Judicial magistrate nomination commission.
Would move the appointment of Jolene Dixon.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. All right. Moving on. Board Administration.
Mr. Chairman, what about the public hearing on the budget?
I'm squeezing another seven minutes out of it. It's five o'clock and it's forty-three.
Oh, okay. All right.
Approval of resolution approving petition for suspension of taxes through the redemption process for CR. Need a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. All right. Moving on. Board Administration.
Mr. Chairman, what about the public hearing on the budget?
I'm squeezing another seven minutes out of it. It's five o'clock and it's forty-three.
Oh, okay. All right.
Approval of resolution approving petition for suspension of taxes through the redemption process for GI.
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. All right. Moving on. Board Administration.
Mr. Chairman, what about the public hearing on the budget?
I'm squeezing another seven minutes out of it. It's five o'clock and it's forty-three.
Oh, okay. All right.
Approval of resolution approving petition for suspension of taxes through the redemption process for GI.
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. All right. Good enough. Thank you. Full board now.
Mr. Chairman, can we go back to seven D? I don't believe that there was...
Oh, I missed one?
No, when you presented that, it should have been a motion.
Need a motion?
Yes.
Need a motion to approve the resolution thanking Lonny?
I would move it, Mr. Chair.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. There we go.
Thank you.
All right. Approval of appointment to the Judicial magistrate nomination commission.
Would move the appointment of Jolene Dixon.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. All right. Moving on. Board Administration.
Mr. Chairman, what about the public hearing on the budget?
I'm squeezing another seven minutes out of it. It's five o'clock and it's forty-three.
Oh, okay. All right.
Approval of resolution approving petition for suspension of taxes through the redemption process for GI.
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. There we go.
Thank you.
All right. Approval of appointment to the Judicial magistrate nomination commission.
Would move the appointment of Jolene Dixon.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. All right. Moving on. Board Administration.
Mr. Chairman, what about the public hearing on the budget?
I'm squeezing another seven minutes out of it. It's five o'clock and it's forty-three.
Oh, okay. All right.
Approval of resolution approving petition for suspension of taxes through the redemption process for GI.
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Approval of resolution approving petition for suspension of taxes through redemption process for GI.
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. All right. Moving on. Board Administration.
Mr. Chairman, what about the public hearing on the budget?
I'm squeezing another seven minutes out of it. It's five o'clock and it's forty-three.
Oh, okay. All right.
Approval of resolution approving petition for suspension of taxes through the redemption process for GI.
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Approval of resolution approving petition for suspension of taxes through redemption process for GI.
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Approval of resolution approving petition for suspension of taxes through redemption process for GI.
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Approval of resolution for notice of property sale. I can't get there quick enough. Somebody got it?
Have to get through all the budget material.
Okay.
Move to set the public hearing, March 24th, at four forty.
Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. All right. Moving on. Mr. Butler.
What do we got?
Four forty-five.
Okay. Four forty-five?
Yikes. All right. Sheriff?
Well, Sheriff, you've lost weight.
Thank you. Wow. The first thing I have...
Say that.
The first thing I have is the Pay My Jailer. The sheriff signed it, so I need, if I can approach you to sign it?
This is for Pay My Jailer?
This is Pay My Jailer.
Did we vote on that last week?
I'd move to authorize the chair to sign.
All right. We need approval for this.
Second.
Discussion.
Last year, or last week, you asked us to look into whether it conflicted with anything that the county attorney's office is going to be doing with fine collections. We don't think that it will, and the contract is just for one year, and it could be terminated at that point if we learn that there are some, any conflicting issues, so we're comfortable with that.
So we're good?
We're good.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Now do we have to pay you?
No. The second thing I have are just the dates for the RFP for the kiosk.
Explain the kiosk.
The key, we already have kiosks up there, and this is how we do the visiting. What we're doing is adding to it. We'll have PRIA put on it, our inmate rulebook, grievances, medical requests, commissary, we'll run through that. Eventually, we hope to have email up on it, and basically, you charge for services like the visiting, the email, the commissary, clothing items that they want to purchase, and that's how it generates revenue through it. So like the commissary, the more things that we have on commissary, the more things that they're allowed to buy in there, that generates a revenue.
So is there one in each cell block?
Right now, there's two in each cell block, on the bigger cell blocks. Depending on who's awarded the contract, some companies work with the kiosk company that we already have, Securus, and some companies would have to put them in. The other thing it does is we'll have a machine outside of the front office, our administration. People can come up and put money on account. It kind of takes the money thing out of our hands. If you're booked into our jail, you have money, we put it into a booking kiosk. When you get released, we just put in your name, and it spits out a debit card for you, and we're no longer keeping track of money and that type of stuff on it. So the date we have for it to issue is March 17th. The due date to register by declaring intent to propose is the 30th. We'll have a period where they can submit questions, all questions. Josh put a lot of this together for me, so all questions have to be submitted to everyone that's, what are we, bidding on this, or, so it's a group thing. Those questions have to be in on the 6th. We gave ourselves three days to answer the questions. The proposal due date is the 20th of April. We expect to award the date the following, that Tuesday, which would be the 21st. We'd come in front of you with all the proposals picked, and depending on the company, I've called most of the companies that are in it to see how long, four to six weeks, so we hope to be up and operational by June 8th.
Fantastic.
That's all I have.
Very good. Thank you, sir. We getting close?
Twelve minutes, three minutes. Yeah, time.
Building Services. I put this on here because somebody wanted to revisit this, and you're up.
I would move to defer this until March 17th. I'll explain why.
Second for discussion.
It is discussion.
I talked to Mark Elgert, and we have a meeting with the contractor for elevator services contract on four o'clock on Thursday. The board's pleasure last week was to at least have that information as to what the contract specifies. My understanding right now is it's $33,600 annually, but I want to see how much that encompasses, what is the term of the contract, et cetera, so that the board can make a more judicious decision whether that's in whatever CIP and whatever fiscal year and how to proceed, so.
That's all the elevators in all the buildings?
Right.
Yeah.
But I want to make sure that we have whether this is a 12, 18-month, so that's my story.
When we do that, I guess I would like to see this come back, and if it doesn't mess up that agreement, we consider, because Dennis says we can, doing one of them sooner than later, mostly because it takes six to nine months to get the material. So even if we did it now, it'd be a year before it would be in. And if, you know, we have one in, and then we could put the next one in the CIP for coming here. Okay, this is discussion. Yes. Are we talking about the contract, or are we talking about the new elevators?
Talking about the service contract.
So that, we'd have to have a separate...
Separate.
Okay.
We already got, what they're going to go over, make sure we're not wasting $33,000 if we do go move on a new elevator. Okay. Secondary Roads.
Do we need to, I'm sorry, do we need to vote on that?
No, it's a discussion.
Okay.
Well, you have a motion to postpone.
We still got to go?
The motion to postpone the...
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay.
Mr. Nara, you're back. Yes. We had a nice week. What I was coming in with today was a permit to work in the right-of-way for Mid-American Energy Company. This is not for utilities within the right-of-way. They're putting a new line on private easement on the east side of Highway 75. This would be from roughly the Port Neal Interchange Road, 260th, moving north along that east side. They will be accessing the private easement, though, from Highway 75. They'll be needing to put out signs and maintain traffic control through the course of their project, and as such, they require a permit to work in the right-of-way from the board. I recommend approval.
Need a motion?
Move it.
Need a second?
Second.
Is this the overhead electrical lines that haven't been used for fifty years?
This is new overhead electrical line that's providing new serviced areas to the north. This is one of two lines that they're running right now, Larry. They're actually coming out along our new CF Drive and then going north on the west side of the interstate. All tree removals that have been done along South Bridge Drive and the Air Force Base that you noticed, those areas are one of the new lines that they're running. This one is coming from their Salix substation to the south and then running up 75, so I don't think those old lines are going to be even a part of this project, so.
Oh, interesting. Okay.
Lot of demand for electrical service on that area.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Close enough, Dan?
We're good now.
All right. We're going back to item number eight. Public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2016 budget. The hearing is open. Anyone wish to speak or against the budget?
Mr. Jack Burright. Yes, Jack Burright from Pearson, Iowa. Was here a couple of weeks ago when you were doing some budget work, and first of all, I'd like to thank you for all the work that you did getting this budget ready and preparing this without raising your taxes. However, I'm still voicing my objection to you shifting another sheriff's patrol to the rural basic instead of leaving it in the general basic where it belongs. I recommend approval.
Need a motion.
Move it.
Need a second.
Second.
Is this the overhead electrical lines that haven't been used for fifty years?
This is new overhead electrical line that's providing new serviced areas to the north. This is one of two lines that they're running right now, Larry. They're actually coming out along our new CF Drive and then going north on the west side of the interstate. All tree removals that have been done along South Bridge Drive and the Air Force Base that you noticed. Those areas are one of the new lines that they're running. This one is coming from their Salix substation to the south and then running up seventy-five, so. I don't think those old lines are going to be even a part of this project, so.
Oh, interesting, okay.
Lot of demand for electrical service on that area.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Close enough yet, Dan? I would go on to committees. I tend the program committee, which is at eight fifteen in the morning on March the third at the LEC courtroom one. The group discusses programs to serve people who entered the court system such as the Project Phoenix, which is no longer in existence. And that program will continue at Jackson Recovery on an outpatient basis. And they will get them signed up for the new insurance and get a pay for through that mechanism. Project Compass is run by the Sulan Mental Health and is strong within the jail identifying and helping inmates with mental illness. Their psychiatrist is in the jail on Friday mornings and they want him more and more and more. The group is always looking for ways to improve and expand services. Also discussed was the drug court and veterans treatment court. Both are working very well. March fifth, Simco MPO, this group deals with transportation in the metro area to include Nebraska and South Dakota. The policy board met at Simco on March fifth to review the recommendations of the technical committee, which the engineers sit on. For the year two thousand and nineteen, the funds that are in the program, one point two million will go to a project in Sioux City. And the remaining funds of about four hundred thousand will go to the Port Neal Road County project. Four hundred thousand, about half of the cost of that project. March sixth, Third Judicial District, Department of Corrections, Board of Directors, Review Business at the Center. Over the past four months, they are fully staffed and at maximum number of people in their facility. Yesterday, March ninth, we had a department meeting. Session lasted nearly an hour and a half. Those folks when they get together get pretty busy on a lot of good topics. It's been excellent, excellent discussion at those meetings. Things such as time cards and how to use them, claim process, phone system, long-range planning evaluations, it just goes on and on and on. They are very, very good meetings and I think people appreciate them.
Mark, I had a question. On the Compass program and the drug court, those are protected, protected programs, aren't they? Because they're funded out of the region, is that correct?
They're funded out of the social services. Okay, are we close?
I've got one.
You've got one, go.
Sure. I feel a little nervous talking about Sulan District Health because of directors in the room. So if I have anything that's wrong, just raise your hand and correct me. But a very good meeting this morning. I'm always very impressed by the professionalism with which that department is run and the medical folks in the room. Just a couple of things that I would highlight. Measles right now, they're reporting they have no cases in Iowa, even though it has reached as close as Sioux Falls, Omaha. And just the due diligence by which they are checking for vaccinations, even in-house and making sure the dissemination of information is out there shows the proactivity that these folks take in mitigating any potential disease. Also, there's a Live Well Iowa program grant in increasing community gardening accessibility for those with physical disabilities, which I thought is a wonderful program, fits in line with the individual that we honored today. Just in making sure that the health and quality of life for those who face challenges is met. And the last thing that I'd like to say is, I told the director, Kevin, today, there's some wonderful stories. And one of the wonderful stories was something that Linda Dre conveyed called Tackling TB, about a really serious situation for a family, non-English speaking. And they faced the plight of having a child that was struggling with this and mitigated that situation. And I thought just a, there's no ambulance or fire truck outside of the door, so to speak. So it may not garner as much attention, but lives saved are very critical. So I would like to have in the future maybe a good news story from Sulan District Health to come forward, share three to four minutes. Because I think they're a great, good news story, a best-kept secret, so to speak. So those are my comments.
Very good. You come here and get an assignment, what a deal. Are we close enough then? We're good enough. All right, we're going back to item number eight. Public hearing on the proposed fiscal year two thousand sixteen budget. The hearing is open. Anyone wish to speak? Or against the budget? Mr. Jack Burright.
Yes, Jack Burright from Pearson, Iowa. Was here a couple of weeks ago when you were doing some budget work. And first of all, I'd like to thank you for all the work that you did getting this budget ready and preparing this without raising your taxes. However, I'm still voicing my objection to you shifting another sheriff's patrol to the rural basic instead of leaving it in the general basic where it belongs. My reasoning for this objection is that the rural area of Woodbury County has approximately twenty percent of the county's population. And that includes the cities, and so they aren't paying into the rural basic. Yet, I think I'm close on this, approximately two-thirds of the tax dollars that you raised for Woodbury County to operate comes from those twenty percent of the people. Give or take a little more, twenty percent of the people are paying two-thirds of the taxes. And yet, you wanted to shift more taxes onto them by shifting a patrol onto the rural basic fund. I don't like it. I don't know where it's gonna stop. Maybe we need a little more rural voice on the board.
Thank you, Jack. Anyone else? Hearing no others? Take a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Close.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Discussion and action on compensation board recommendations. That should be in your packet. I believe the compensation board is recommending zero increase for supervisors and five percent for before their elected officials.
I told my representative that I did not believe I needed a raise. As for the other officials, I would. I do believe five percent is out of line and I would encourage us to look at something more closely mirroring the private sector and, but not. Also keeping in mind the CPI, which is one point six or seven percent.
Is that a motion?
I would be comfortable with two percent, Mr. Chair.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
And just so I'm clear on the motion, your motion is two percent for elected officials and zero percent for supervisors?
Correct.
One second.
Okay, one second. Discussion?
I, I'll just say one thing. One of the reasons, just for the, kind of the public record, is not that I feel our elected officials do deserve to keep up with the Consumer Price Index. A supervisor on, related, but also their deputies receive a portion thereof. I think we have some excellent people. We want to retain them. But I think that, I concur, I don't want to devote an increase in our own salaries. And I'll actually be looking possibly in the future, maybe this will be an agenda item for next week, to look at what would be a commensurate salary level for supervisors as we look at some reorganization possibly in our county government. So at this time, zero percent is what I would advocate for supervisors as well.
Yes, sir.
And I appreciate what you folks have said and went, your deliberations through the budget process. I think I was, I was very pleased with the results of what occurred at the budget deliberations this year. But also included in that budget is a three and a quarter percent raise for all elected officials. Isn't that correct, Dennis?
Correct, and deputies.
Right. And that is already in the budget, three and a quarter percent. And last year, none of the elected officials received no increase at all. So when you're talking about the Consumer Price Index and keeping pace with the folks. And I can understand that, but when you're talking about what has occurred with the management wage plan employees throughout the county that have gotten three and a quarter percent for how many years now?
This would be a third year.
Third year, and it's planned for four years. They, I have deputies that depend on keeping pace because of my salary. I know we've talked about this before, Matthew, and you've heard it before, but it's real. As far as when those deputies are coming to work and they work right alongside Dennis, and Dennis holds a test to that, is because when you see those folks, those deputies, they come to work every day, they have a lot of responsibility, and the wage plan employees are doing the same thing. And we have great employees here. The county does a great job doing that. And so, I'm just, I would be remiss if I didn't get up in and speak for, you know, I think that I don't mind taking the raise either. But when it comes to the, my deputies and all the other deputies that are affected by this, I think it's reasonable to consider three and a quarter percent. The reason that they did five percent, the compensation board, was because of that. There was also voiced that you folks contacted the compensation board, and a few folks did, and said that they, supervisors were comfortable with where they're at. And that's fine, and you're not affected by, and you don't have deputies that are affected by that. So I appreciate where you're at. I appreciate what you did this year as far as working through the budget process. Because it wasn't easy and we'll see how it goes from here. But as far as the elected officials and their deputies, I think it's reasonable. It's already in the budget, so it's, and it's not a huge amount of money to consider three and a quarter percent for the elected officials and their deputies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Certainly understand. Certainly did not want to freeze pay for another year. I do think the, the choice that we made to, the previous board made to, to freeze pay for the previous year, I don't, I don't think that should come back and result in a, in a double large raise, so to speak. I'm still comfortable with two percent, although I do realize the disparity of the deputy situation, wage plan employees. It's something I think that we should look at in the future. I think I'll definitely investigate that in, in future budgets. But, and I also want to thank the elected officials for their work in, in the budget process. I know PJ back there came forward with, with a lot of voluntary cuts that Supervisor Taylor had, had brought to our attention. And other elected officials have done the same. I know long-term planning has, has seen a resurgence this year as far as the CIP budget, and I'm very pleased. I, I, but I'm still happy with two percent. I think this is, this is, this is about public service and, and I do think it's more than comparable to, to our peers in the private sector. We enjoy tremendous health benefits, and that goes without saying. But, but again, I want to thank, thank you Auditor Gill and thank the rest of the elected officials and maintain my motion for the taxpayers.
Mike Clayton, Woodbury County Treasurer. Well, I might as well make a few people angry here, so I will. For the last three years, Ask Me's got two percent. That's fine. We have good Ask Me employees. I don't have a problem with that. But the elected officials seem to get up and down whichever, you know, we want to balance the budget on the backs of elected officials. Well, I don't know what you want to do. And I don't care if I ever get another raise, because I'm making plenty of money for as old as I am and for as dumb as I am. But, like Pat said, my deputies are the, really the ones that do the work. You know, deserve a pay raise, so, you know. And I understand, maybe you don't want to do the three and a quarter, that's fine, you know. Because even only got the two last time around, we got, you know, hate phone calls, you know, so, you know. And I don't mind, I can take them, but I just, whatever you guys want to do. But just, you know, we're not the only ones that get a pay raise that you have to try to worry about balancing your budget on. You know, ninety-three percent of my budget is wages and benefits, ninety-three percent. So, you know, if you want to look at trying to cut county costs somewhere, you gotta look farther than just elected officials. Remember that for next year, I guess.
And on the wage, wage plan, I agree totally. I need to renew some talks with HR and as far as, and I've talked to you about it, as far as pairing some, some of the wage plan annual raises with, with merit, which is something I think we can look at as well.
We'd love merit pay for everybody, you know, be great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Sheriff Drew?
Oh, Jack.
Mr. Gill, you mentioned it was a small, small amount. Now, is there any comparison that you might give the public as to what the cost of the amount of money to make those raises as recommended by the compensation board and how much it would be under the motion that is presently on the table?
I didn't know, this Dennis Butler. I had all three of them here. I'd prepared. We did add three and a quarter in the budgets. That amounted to a wage total increase because I had to take the supervisors back out with the FICAN IPRs. That amounted to forty-nine thousand eight eleven. That is in the budget now. The five percent that the comp board recommended without the salaries of the supervisors, we already had with seventy-six thousand oh twenty-one, I'd already taken off supervisors, so we already had forty-nine thousand in the budget. So that would have been an increase of twenty-six thousand, two hundred and ten dollars. Going to two percent, we actually had the money in the budget for three and a quarter. Actually, what we're saving totally for all the deputies, kind of include deputies here and elected officials, is nineteen thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars. Is what we're saving by going from three and a quarter to two. So that pretty much answers what Jack was adding. That gives the board information.
Did you get that, Jack?
Okay.
Sheriff Drew? No?
I appreciate what Matthew Ung said, so I really wouldn't come up here. I mean, I think he really was.
You say that every time.
But, but again, it goes back to deputies, like everyone else says. And I'm also willing to amend that three and a quarter down to two and a half. I think that's reasonable. I think we're not increasing any of the tax base anymore. I think it fits well with them budget, but it also, again, gives those deputies who, and I've said it before, do a large chunk of what we elected officials are hired to do, they're doing it for us. So I think two and a half percent is probably justified, especially if we're not gonna go with the three and a quarter, just for consideration.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Have a motion on the floor, two percent for elected officials with the exception of supervisors at zero. Yes.
It's supposed to reduce at an equal percentage, so that percentage would be sixty percent. Because you're reducing from five to two, that's three dollars, that's sixty percent reduction. They don't actually give you the privilege to do the percent. You gotta do it by equal percentage, so that'd be sixty percent reduction.
You have to reduce all elected officials by sixty percent.
Yeah, across the board, because then six percent is zero, zero.
Yeah.
Six percent of five percent is two percent. Is that, am I right on that?
That's the way I've been writing it.
But you're not talking about the supervisors also, you're just talking about the other elected officials.
Because six, five, zero, zero.
Right.
So it doesn't affect super, any way you go.
That was just a clarification, then.
Right.
Correct.
It's still effectively two percent. Is that another way, so, okay. Just wanted to make sure.
But the motion will say, what, a sixty?
Percent reduction in compensation.
Of the compensation.
I'd ask for a record, roll call vote.
Roll call.
Ung?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Smith?
Nay.
Clausen?
Aye.
Monson?
Aye.
Okay. Discussion and adoption of the fiscal year two thousand and sixteen county budget.
I did include the recap that you gave you, I think, last week or the week before. And I gave you the new tax rates as they stand. It also included the tax askings, what have, how affected different classes of property in the city and outside in the townships. And also show you the rollbacks. The only change we've had in the budget so far was a three thousand dollar reduction in juvenile detention on a particular line of emergency services. That I've already done. I have to amend the budget forms, which is minute there. And we'll actually put that back in cash reserves. And that's it.
Discussion?
Mr. Chairman. I'd like to go over, I made a very, well, not I didn't, Mr. Butler, our finance budget analyst. And I got together and came up with this paper. And I want to go over how the budget was balanced. I've got a sore throat, so excuse me. We had one insurance holiday, and that was in March. There was two hundred and fifty-nine thousand put in the general basic fund, forty-five thousand put in the general supplemental, fourteen thousand in the rural basic fund. This is a one-time insurance holiday. We did not have one last year, so it couldn't help the budget. We might not have another one next year, or we actually could end up spending more. Gaming revenues. The equipment replacement fund, we put in one hundred and seventy-nine thousand. The general basic fund, all line items with a code of six thousand, we put in one hundred and eighty-five thousand. Emergency services, that could be emergency management. All line items with a code of six thousand, we put in seventy-seven thousand. Sulan regional transit, meals on wheels, council on domestic assault. We put in another fifty-some thousand. The county only receives a total of four hundred and thirty-five thousand in gaming revenues. Yet we spent four hundred and ninety-three thousand. The local option sales tax. We took two hundred thousand and funded the economic development department, one hundred and seventy-one thousand to fund the planning zoning department, twenty-three thousand to fund the county fair, two hundred thousand to invest in Woodbury County, fifteen thousand for the WIT Improvement Regional Housing Fund, ten thousand for Woodbury County Community Action Senior Community Service Employment. That totaled six hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. In local option sales tax, we only received five hundred thousand a year. Reason we had this money was passports were very prudent on what they spent out of these funds. They were used for emergencies. It was not used for operations. We are now using it for operations. Number four, the district health cash reserve in excess of twenty-five percent was transferred to the general basic fund. This is a hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars. This transfer will vary from year to year. It could be zero or it could be any amount above that. Number five, we transferred one uniform patrol deputy from general basic to the rural basic fund. This transfer helped the revenue gap in the general basic, but increased the tax in rural basic fund. We budgeted, number six, we budgeted a new lieutenant in the LEC facility without identifying a source of revenue to provide new employee funding. That cost was ninety-four thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. We did reduce some appropriations in several line items that amounted to one hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Number eight, we cut off funding for gang prevention programs and the Phoenix program with no long-term planning of the potential consequences of increased areas such as juvenile detention, juvenile probation, and other areas involving school, gang violence, and our jail facility. An example of a revenue loss would be the reimbursement for care and keep involving the BIA, Dakota County, and other counties. The juvenile detention director increased reimbursement fees from three hundred thousand. The juvenile detention director increased reimbursement fees from three-hundred thousand to four-hundred-and-fifty thousand for fiscal year sixteen. When the juvenile detention center is full of Woodbury County juveniles, that revenue will be lost or greatly reduced. Long-term would result in a potential increase in taxes in fiscal year seventeen. First, to restore the lost cash balances in the general supplemental fund. And then to increase the taxes to cover the potential loss of revenues. Everyone seems to be very happy because we held the line or reduced taxes. But what we did was a lot of shifting of monies, taking it out of general basic, putting it in general supplemental, and then funding it with one-time revenues. I think we've programmed in a budget increase for sixteen, seventeen. Our cash balances in twelve, thirteen were twenty-seven percent. Thirteen, fourteen, they were twenty-two-point-eight percent. Fourteen, fifteen, they were twenty percent. And in fifteen, sixteen, with this budget, we'll be down to eighteen percent cash reserves. We have a policy of not going below twenty-two percent. We're well below that. For that reason, and a number of others, there's no way I can vote for this budget.
I would like to respond to some of those, and I'm sure others will have comments too. I'm confused. I thought, I thought a tax decrease was good news. The charge that we have somehow set ourselves up for failure next year, I completely reject that. Uh, just, I'd just like to go point by point, though. The insurance holiday, that's duly noted, that we, we might not be able to count on that next year. We did show restraint in, in taking one as opposed to two. We could have taken two and still remained at an appropriate level at the advice of the HR department. So even if we didn't have that, though, we would still be, we would still be implementing a property tax decrease. Gaming revenue, at the advice of our finance department, we did, we did fund equipment replacement with one-time revenue because typically, not always, but typically, equipment replacement is a one-time deal. So those are one-time monies we use typically for one-time expenses. We did have carryover, and we did use that. And the same was true for number three, local option sales tax. We did use some carryover. But I think that's a lot more prudent than what the previous board did last year, which was to drain about almost one million dollars from our reserves in addition to raising taxes by the largest amount in five years. We did not, we, we did not do that. Something else Supervisor Clausen said that doesn't, that I have questions on in regards to our long-term costs for, for gang outreach programs, and specifically the Phoenix program. You said we have no long-term plan, but you said, and it was in a journal article in years past, that when federal funding dried up for the Phoenix program, the county funding would necessarily be cut. And in the past year, past few years, the county has acted as the, the lender of last resort, which, which is a compassionate stance, but when it's with taxpayer dollars and from a single income source of property taxes, it's, it's hard to maintain that. And so you have actually reversed your position on that publicly. And in order to remain consistent with the fundamental functions of government, namely roads, bridges, and, and other things like that, the board did vote to take the cost-effective option. Certainly for the next few years, as, as we learned from the Phoenix program, they do great work, but the cost is simply ballooned out of proportion per person. And the budget does need to be balanced, so that is not a, that was not a criticism, but it sounded like it, it was intended to be. I don't think, and I've asked Dennis Butler to, to look at, look at the archives and tell, and, and, because I had a question, when was the last time that the county was able to lower the actual tax bill? And I've had numerous discussions about this with Supervisor Taylor as, as we, and, and the chairman, about our goals in regards to reducing not only the tax rate, and Supervisor Taylor had an excellent presentation on how you can supposedly hold the tax rate steady, but property taxes will increase and your tax bill will increase. The size of government will increase. County spending will increase. We actually decreased the tax bill. We are going to vote to do that today. And that is an extremely encouraging thing for the taxpayers to witness. I don't think it's too much to ask that when we have fifteen years of tax increases, dollar, on a dollar basis, that we have one year to step back and reduce those taxes. And it could be that way next year. I'm not promising that. But I'm saying fifteen years ahead and one year to step back, I think that's, I think that's more than reasonable. And that is actually the number Dennis came back and told me. The last time that the county has been able to reduce property tax askings, this is the first time in fifteen years. And so I am going to vote for this budget wholeheartedly. And I think it's, it's a great accomplishment that, that we can share with the whole community.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you very much. I would second many of those same sentiments. You know, the charge that our reserves have gone from twenty-seven to twenty-two-point-eight to twenty percent were things that, of course, happened on your watch, not ours. The, the insurance holiday was voted on unanimously. And so if there was heartburn over that, that should have been opposed by you. It was not. We received budget after budget after budget. There were no reductions of any real substance that were brought forward, maybe a couple of thousand dollars. We asked our department heads. This is something I'm really proud about. Our department heads were given things that our CFO, so to speak, or a budget analyst, identified that weren't yet at fifty percent, hadn't been spent. They came back, instead of going through line item by line item and saying, "We're going to take off fifty dollars off of that." They came back to us with one-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand dollars. And I'm proud of them, and I'm proud of their commitment and their fiscal stewardship. And so they came back, and we had reductions of one-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand dollars in one meeting's time. Yes, we chose to fund some one-time expenses with gaming revenue. But what I would argue is that funding a nonprofit with its salaries year after year is ongoing expenses. I know the insistence at first was that it was property taxes. It had to be property taxes that funded our nonprofits, even though there was heartburn in our community, whether that was the function and the role of government. And, and as we've stated, we have had a very limited focus on whether those monies actually leverage other dollars and serve a core function of county government. But I'd agree with Supervisor Ung. We are actually reducing not only the tax rate, but the tax askings. And, and even looking at something like the rural basic fund. I understand that there's some, there's some heartburn over the shift. But the rural basic fund, all told, will actually have less of a tax asking than they did before. And so all of these things that we are looking at as far as funds that can be used were being grown as what people pejoratively called slush funds. And so I would ask Mr. Butler, if you wouldn't mind taking the podium. I just have a couple of questions. We didn't have the luxury of seeing this prior to. So I want to ask some questions so that there's no confusion out there in the public, because I think this document may lend towards some, and I don't want anyone to be confused. Mr. Butler, can I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
Thank you. Number two. It says, "Total, four-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixteen dollars." And it says, "Note, the county only receives a total of four-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand in gaming revenues." Well, as a simpleton, I look at that and say, "We're only receiving four-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars, but we're spending four-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand." That looks to me, as Joe Q. Public, like we're actually spending more than we're taking in. But that's not the case, is it, Mr. Butler?
No, we are, we are using.
Clarify for that, because that's, it's pretty misleading to the public, and I don't want anyone out there to be misled, because that would be a, that'd be a tragic situation. Can you?
We are using two-hundred-and-thirteen thousand of unobligated funds carryover from this current year.
Okay, so that was money that was a flush balance from the previous year, correct?
Yeah, so we had, that we had not obligated, correct.
Okay, so the statement that there's a total of four-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand, but the county only receives four-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, which would lead me to believe that, that we're spending more than we're taking in, isn't really the case, correct?
What do we receive per year then?
Four-hundred, we, we get three-hundred-and-sixty thousand a year from the gaming revenues. We get seventy-five thousand from MIRD. Uh, gaming revenues, I base that on seventy-two million a year. We get one-half of one percent. That could go up and it could go down. Hopefully, after a year, it does go up when you do get more revenue. That's yet to be seen down the road here. And we may not, you know, we got still, I think, two-hundred-and-some thousand left over this year of unobligated funds in next, in next year's budget. If we don't spend that, nothing comes up, which obviously something only seems to come up during the year, a vision grant, which is being changed, another form of grants, it could come up. Or some of these people may not spend all of their budgets in the gaming. If they don't spend it, we don't transfer it. We only transfer if it's spent. Same way with local ops sales tax. If Plains only, only spends one-hundred-and-sixty thousand, we only transfer one-hundred-and-sixty thousand. These are the maximum transfers we'll be doing.
Same question, number three. Says a total, six-hundred-and-twenty-six, uh, six-hundred-and-twenty thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand. County only receives five-hundred thousand in local option sales tax. That would seem to imply that we're actually spending more than we're taking in. But with a transfer or the carryover from previous years, that's simply not the case, as well as the projections that you have laid out before the board on what will be received in the next fiscal year, correct?
Correct, because the way I figure that out, I take what's coming in and what's coming over as a carryover.
Right.
The only thing I'd like to point out in the local option sales tax, the two-hundred thousand that we're investing in Woodbury County, we're doing that this current year. We got obligated. We have it in for next year. The following year, we may or may not have that. Depends how far the board wants to go to get to that million dollars.
But what's missing in all of this is the projected growth and the future revenue that will be there. I just want the public to know that if I was looking at this, this would be misleading. Not maybe intentionally.
I'm sorry, Jim.
No, it's okay.
I don't think it is misleading. We did spend more than what we took in. Now, the only reason we were able to do that is because there was carryover from the years before.
But we're not looking at what's coming in this next year. That figure's not even.
You know, we, we don't have a hedge fund here. We can only budget, in my opinion, on what is unknown, not what we hope to get in the future. If you just look at this current year, we did spend more. We were able to do that because we had carryover buddy. Am I wrong on that?
Correct, we had carryover.
Okay, so I think you're misleading and trying to explain it a different, different way, because we spent more than what we brought in.
A budget is simply, and I'll go back to kind of the tax askings preparation. A budget, you have to look at what you expect as anticipated revenue. No one says, "Well, we don't anticipate in getting any revenue, so we can't actually count that." You can't actually count taxpayer dollars. You can't count on any gaming revenue. You can't count on local option sales tax. Well, that's bogus. If anybody asked our budget analyst, he would give you here what the projections are. Now, will we come over that a little bit or under that? Sure, but that's why you prepare a budget. No one, and I don't think any family does this out there, no one says, "Well, we're not going to have any budget next year, so we better stop buying groceries and we better stop, you know, keeping a mortgage." You anticipate your revenues, and you know that you can count on some revenues. And that's what we've done, and we're simply aligning, instead of building up these large reserves within reserves, we're dedicating these one-time expenses with things that we know are going to be there, unless we're getting rid of the local option sales tax, unless the gaming revenues are projected to dry up next month. Is that the case? And?
It won't sink anymore.
Okay, well, there you go. And so I think that what we've done is a very good thing. I'm actually very proud of all the work that's gone into it. I thank you for all your work, because you probably got tasked more than anybody in all this, and kept you up at night. But it's a good thing, I think.
I'll just quickly add one comment. Unless we are dipping into reserves, spending these funds such as gaming and local option sales tax, like you said, is responsible, because we're putting them to their intended use.
Gaming, wait.
Okay.
I stand by these figures. They are correct. You are wrong. When you spend more than you take in, you've got to be getting that money from somewhere. Now, you've decreased cash reserves. You're, Matthews gave me number one, I believe. And number one I can live with, that's the, uh, the, the insurance holiday. Nobody would not take that money. That is revenue to the county. So to say that I wouldn't, you know, that I voted for it, that's correct. I'd vote for it all day long. Equipment replacement fund, that is not a one-year. That is every year, year in, year out. It's office equipment, it's vehicles, it's, uh, it's the cost of doing business. That does not go down. The money that has been spent, we are taking in less than what we budgeted. And Matthew talks about roads and bridges. That's an entirely separate area from this budget.
Dennis, why are we reducing, why are we reducing our reserves?
Why are we reducing our reserves? The one reason we're reducing reserves is we are capped three-fifty in a general basic fund. To balance this thing out.
The major item taken out of reserves will be?
One of the major items that will be taken out of reserves is our RISE grant, which is seven-hundred thousand dollars. That is going to drive us down to eighteen percent. That we will get back through TIF revenues, but that is four years down the road. In, in our preliminary twenty-fifty vision, we get paid back eighty thousand years, or eighty thousand years, eighty thousand dollars over ten years. Originally, I was hoping we'd get that back in two-hundred thousand dollars in four years. So that's all a decision the board, when we get to the twenty-fifty vision, that's been.
But we plan to take that seven-hundred thousand out of reserves when it happens.
Yes, yes, we did.
Can I make one more point, and then I won't beat the dead horse? You say that we're spending more money than you take in. Strong. Here's why. You refuse to look at the anticipated revenue that your own budget analyst has said is coming in. So on the one hand.
Now, wait, what revenue are you talking about?
Revenue in the local option sales tax, revenue in the gaming funds. Those are projections.
Now, it's Mr. Butler, and he's standing right there. Have you increased those projections?
I did increase, I did not, I did increase the gaming a little bit. The local option I increased from four-hundred to five-hundred, and that may even be low yet, because we have not had the impact of CF, because in April, the department revenue's going to reevaluate how the revenue's coming in because of CF.
Right, that's a possibility.
And CF is already expanding an extra four-hundred million dollars.
Right, anytime they spend more for construction, yes, some of it's labor, but they're spending that labor here in Sioux City. They're buying materials, everything else. The impact of CF has not yet hit us, has really not hit us yet. Now, yes, it may be a one-year deal, it may be a two-year deal or three-year deal. But we have other things coming online also that hopefully, I'm hoping, to increase that five-hundred thousand quite a bit. I could be wrong.
Do you anticipate, and here's a simple way of asking this. Do you anticipate right now on our gaming revenues by the decision that this board has made, or will shortly, I'm hoping, make on the budget, that we will be at a negative balance anytime within this next year?
No, you mean actual cash balance being negative?
Right.
No.
It'd be impossible, in fact, wouldn't it?
No, and I'd never let the board get in that situation where we run out of money.
Right, in fact, there would be several hundred thousand that you would anticipate as a projection, even after all of these, at the end of this next fiscal year. Isn't that correct?
There is money left over, because we have to have some, in case something comes up.
Thank you.
But we do have money.
Appreciate it.
But nobody's talked about a negative balance until you just mentioned that.
When you, and when you say that there's.
Revenue coming in.
Sure.
But you're spending more revenue. You could, continuing down this path, yes, you could end up with a negative balance.
I agree. If we spent as the last board has, we may. But if we are aligning one-time monies with one-time expenses, which is what we've done, instead of asking for taxpayers to go.
Why do you say it's one-time expenses? It happens every year.
Simply because we rubber-stamp somebody getting a new vehicle every single year without asking the question if the new vehicle is needed, that may be.
That question's asked at every budget, or at least it's supposed to be. This year, I don't think any questions were asked.
And I would disagree, and here's why. Because we went to our elected officials, and they said, "Thank you for asking all of the questions. Thank you for putting document after document after document together." If no questions were asked, then I'm not blaming you for being remiss, but I...
Go right ahead, because I asked for the budgets to come back. The only thing we did is receive them. We never okayed them, but now we're okaying.
With a tax asking decrease and rate decrease, which I think we can all be proud of, and I'm happy for Woodbury County taxpaying families, because it's a good day.
Amen.
I've been around here for 10 years, Larry, and we've used every single one of these things in the past 10 years to...
Not to this extent.
Yes, we have, one way or another. We have a motion?
I would move to adopt the fiscal year 2016 county budget.
Probably second.
Roll call.
Clausen?
No, and the reason is, I appreciate the taxes going down. The way it was handled, the way it was done, it creates problems for future boards. I probably will not be here, but they are going to have, there's going to be grief from this budget.
Matt?
Smith? I am also going to vote no, because I do think there were too many one-time monies used. In the past, we have done that two to three years down the road with the raising taxes. I've been in a situation through experience where this is exactly what happened, so I hope I'm wrong. I don't like the yo-yo up and down, but I'm fearful that it will ultimately result in a tax increase. I'd like to see more of an even process, more long-term thinking. My other reason for voting against it is I'm absolutely against the cutting of the production dollars, of the Phoenix dollars. I also believe that will result in juvenile detention numbers going up. And I think, quite frankly, we have lowered taxes on the backs of our most vulnerable citizens, and so I'm voting no.
Taylor?
Well, I think I've explained my reasoning rationale, so I'll labor the point. But if it was merely about reserves and merely about shifting funds to their statutorily designed purposes, then that may be a point well taken. I believe we've done a lot of hard work. I believe we talked and had a lot of discussions with our department heads, and I thank them. I thank everybody who's had a portion of this. And I think it's going to be good for Woodbury County's taxpaying families. I vote yes.
Very happily, I, because 15 years of property tax increases is more than enough reason to be happy about a decrease this year.
All right. Do I have to do a monologue?
Go right ahead. An explanation of a vote is out of order.
Do we have any citizen input? If not, take a motion to adjourn. Oh, are there any supervisor issues?
Mike, don't leave. I will say I had to go and sold my van. I had to do a title change. We were treated very well in your department, very speedy service, and I decided to pass it on then. I know, but I know what they look like, so I can point. And they even loaned us some screwdrivers, so we could take out the plates and put the new ones on, so...
Anyone else? Need a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
No, no one is going left.
I thought you were going to say you were in Florida or something.